There we go.
Councilmember Boges.
Here.
Councilmember Purdon. Councilmember Carr.
Yeah.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Here.
Okay, staff presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We'd like to use this opportunity, as we've discussed, to have a series of workshops with you to work through each of the strategic priorities and how they relate to the approved capital improvements plan. This helps us in fully beginning the process of our budgeting, I hate to say this, for the 24, 25 budget, but we do start this early in starting to look to prioritize the projects you want to see accomplished so that we can begin pricing and planning. I know one of the questions received is if we could kind of give an update on the difference between planning, design, and construction. And with each of these projects, we're going to explain to you where we are in that process. And then at the conclusion, I think with some of these cases, we have some recommendations to you all to begin planning for some future projects. Planning is the first stage so that we can begin to cycle those within your CIP program. And with that, we are going to go back to stormwater. We're going to start with number two, transportation and aesthetics. We did need a little bit more time on stormwater, so we'll circle back to that one. But then we'll continue on this series as we go forward and provide updates as we move along. And with that, I'm going to have Assistant City Manager Matt Feeney start with transportation.
Good afternoon, City Council. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'll start with the transportation and cover some aesthetics issues as well in this workshop presentation. So I'd like to begin with an overall map of projects that we have assigned priorities or have built recently or are in the process of doing and give you kind of an idea of what's going on in our transportation realm, in the realm of pathways. So our transportation items are usually kind of broken up into two types of projects. We have a lot of pathway retrofits that you'll see that we do throughout the city as well as new roadway construction. Obviously, there's limited opportunity for new roadway construction, but we do have one of those that I'll be speaking about in the next series of slides. So as you see here, we have a pretty robust suite of projects. We recently completed the Imperial Shores sidewalk, sidewalk and drainage project. It was an eight-foot-wide sidewalk with curb and gutter and enclosed drainage. That project turned out quite nicely. We finished the West Terry Street multi-use path project, but we do have the south side sidewalk portion is under design. I was speaking with the engineer not too long ago. We'll probably be presenting concepts for public feedback as we come into the spring of this year, probably late in the spring. We'll be scheduling public workshops for that. We recently completed the Cockle Shell Drive and Maddox Lane sidewalks here. And really, what's going on right now in our project suite is we have a couple, well, we have three large projects that are under design and another large one that will go to design, will probably be soliciting designers as we come into the summer of this year. So the ones that are under design, I mentioned the West Terry South sidewalk. We now have 60% plans on Goodwin Street. That's a very, it looks like it's a short area, but that is a very significant project for us. It involves a bridge replacement, pedestrian facilities on both sides of the street, new drainage, where there was no drainage infrastructure and curb and gutter, landscaping and lighting.
If you recall, just as a reminder, we did submit that as a legislative appropriation because typically they do prefer projects that are further along in the design process. So that would be one that we'll prioritize asking for funding for.
So that project, it's well underway. And so we're in the plan review and we're just getting into the right-of-way acquisition phases. We'll be talking to you about those probably as we come into the first of the year. Additionally, you recently selected a design engineer for the East Terry Street, the $16.8 million grant for drainage improvements as well as pedestrian improvements from Old 41 all the way to Benita Grand Drive. That project, we're negotiating the contract right now and it'll be on the upcoming council agendas. Kind of an interesting project that dovetails into that is the Benita Grand Drive project. We've been, you know, this is part of the settlement agreement with the Benita Grand Mine, but it does include a pathway facility. I believe it's a 10-foot pathway along this road corridor and that project is under design and is currently in the right-of-way acquisition phase. The Rosemary Drive project is, right now, it's a very similar set of circumstances to the East Terry. You have selected a designer and we are negotiating the contract and expect to bring that in front of you in one of the upcoming council meetings. So it has significant funds already budgeted to it, but it will be, you know, the design work will really start in earnest as we come into this year. And then finally, the next two, we have the Paradise Road Multi-Use Path Drainage Improvement Project. We've advanced some funding through the budget workshop or through the budget process this year and will be soliciting designers probably as we come into the summertime to get that project moving along. It's a pretty sizable project. We've estimated around $13 million. And then the last that was put onto our priority list, you know, that has some activity or potential for it is Old 41, really from the roundabout north to Rosemary Creek. We recommended you include that as a request through the CBDG dollars that are coming as a result of Hurricane Ian. And so we'll see whether that gets some traction as those grant cycles come up, as the county starts to develop them. That'll be one that we'll, you know, see if we can get some funding for. So that really is kind of where we are on the pedestrian side of things. I think we have a robust, I'm going to use that word way too many times, group of projects and we're advancing them in various stages. Just as a refresher, almost any one of these that we do really requires drainage improvements. This is a screenshot of West Terry Street. Here, we had to enclose this ditch with all of this pipe that you see so that we could build the pathway that you now see on the north side. Just about everywhere that we look at a pathway project, that's the challenge that we face. It certainly creates increased expense, but it leads to the space that you need to build these pathway systems. Another big component that we've tried to, you know, incorporate in our new projects is physical separation for the folks that are utilizing the pedestrian facility. That physical separation, you know, helps prevent drivers that might be inattentive from, you know, doing some undue harm to folks that are walking along. So we believe that's an important component as well. And then finally, you know, in addition to that, we utilize landscape and hardscape, in particular landscape, to further enhance the buffer as a visual cue to people that are driving along the corridor not to drive their vehicle up and onto the pedestrian facilities. In some cases, that doesn't work and most notably is West Terry Street Multi-Use Path. We actually had to come back in and put removable bollards because we had folks that were unfortunately utilizing the 12-foot-wide path as a way to escape traffic problems.
The American way.
So we believe all of those components are important and we incorporate them into every design of a project like them. So here's just a little more detailed update. I told you, Goodwin Street, we really are at a 60% plan design. This shows a portion of those plans. Rosemary Drive, as I mentioned earlier, we have a design firm selected and we are currently negotiating the contract, which will come back in front of City Council for approval. And then Paradise Road, we'll be soliciting the design for Paradise Road here later in this upcoming year. So that concludes the pathways. I mentioned we have limited opportunity for roadways, but we have a very significant roadway project that is under design currently here in the city of Benita Springs and that is the Northwest Quadrant Road. So you may recall, we entered into a settlement agreement with the landowner here north of the Public Shopping Center for a right-of-way corridor. We still do have some remaining right-of-way needs. I'm actually working to schedule a meeting and discuss that with the shopping center here in the upcoming weeks. But we have been working diligently on the roadway design and about a week and a half ago, I received the 60% plans, which is a kind of a milestone. That starts to set up the formalized portion of right-of-way acquisition and it means that we are, you know, construction is much closer than a theoretical date. This project is large in terms of the right-of-way asks and we will be working to, you know, to get that sewn up in the upcoming year. Construction will probably start at some point in 2025. This, again, just a little inset to show you, you know, here are the 60%, a portion of the 60% plans to give you a sense of what the roadway design looks like. This road will tie into the proposed improvements of FDOT's PDNE for the intersection of US-41 and Benita Beach Road. They are relying on us to complete this roadway. One other update that ties into that is the PDNE, we had the public meetings back last April, in April of this year. The second step of that is what they call the public hearing. It really is where they come back and tell you between the two alternatives. You may recall there was a displaced left alternative and then there was eight-laning US-41. Both relied on the city's roadway as well as FDOT building a new roadway that connects the Royal Road to US-41. Both of those had that as a component. But what happens here in March 26th at the Recreation Center is FDOT will come back and they will say between those two alternatives that I loosely described, we've, you know, done some further analysis and they will select one of those alternatives or some hybridization thereof as the final alternative. So it's an important meeting to see what the final results are, but the reality is we, the preview of what the results are likely to be was the meeting that we had in April. It was winnowed down to two alternatives. What will happen at this meeting is they will show which of those alternatives they want to pursue. March 26th, 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock at the Benita Springs Rec Center. 5:00 PM or 1700 to 7:00 o'clock or 1900. So that's a milestone for us. It's not as, it's not as critical, this is a meeting that was in April, but that is a significant milestone for Benita Springs. Old 41 and Benita Beach Road, you may recall there was a PDNE. The public meetings were held in April of 2022. That study is still, they haven't reached the finalization portion, so I don't have a date as to when that meeting will occur. Okay, so switching.
With respect to Old 41 and Benita Beach Road, is that the project where Collier County's coming forward from the south?
Yes. So that's the project. It, in Benita, it had a, basically, it had two options that were a quadrant road that crossed. In this, in that case, it would have been the southeastern quadrant that connected over to Racetrack Road. It involved a four-lane section up to that roadway point, which was the desired section of Collier County. And then north of there, as you came into the Benita Beach Road intersection, we'd been firm that we didn't want to add, you know, widen lanes because it creates congestive problems as you make the intersection ever wider, which is really what the problem has been with the US-41 beach road intersection.
Okay, thank you.
So that kind of concludes the transportation part. We have a large set of projects that council has kind of set us on over the years and we're advancing those. And I think we're, you know, we're kind of in the phase where we're going to drive those to the ground, you know, build them. And then, you know, in the next, maybe the next time we talk about transportation or the following, we'll have more, you know, we'll be looking for more ideas and presenting more ideas for where to go next.
We're also going to be asking to update the pedestrian master, the pedestrian bicycle master plan so that we can identify additional locations where we can be building infrastructure as well and provide public input on that process, too.
Question for you, Matt. The access road, I guess probably not the appropriate name that is going to be for Anglers, is it Anglers Cove?
Paradise.
Paradise, thank you, Anglers Paradise, that is just north of the old Boston Whaler dealership. That's coming along pretty quickly. When is that going to be open and is that a one-way or a two-way?
I, is John here? No. John may know, I mean, what I can tell you, that really is a function of the private development. You're talking about the cut-in off of US-41. I believe it is a right-in, right-out. It is not a full median, you know, where you could turn left and go north. He's confirming that. I don't know when they plan on constructing it. I'm not aware.
It's underway.
I can see, I've seen that.
We had asked for that to be one of the first phases. Unfortunately, it's going to be a little bit later on their development. They didn't want access coming off of 41 mainly because the trucks would have to slow down and that was going to create a problem for them. So you will see it, but it was not going to be in one of the initial construction phases.
Thanks, John.
Okay. So if there are any other questions about transportation, I think.
I have one. What about lighting?
Oh, we, with the new roadways, for example, part of this, this is the quadrant roadway. It has a lighting component. You may notice, I was talking to the mayor earlier, there's lighting going in on West Terry Street. The foundations are all being poured as we speak. So we do incorporate lighting. Rosemary Drive has a lighting component as well in the scoping as well as Goodwin Street. So we do try to incorporate that. Now, interestingly, East Terry Street, there's probably an area where we will ask for lighting and there's probably an area where it's a little more rural where decorative lighting probably isn't the most appropriate, so we'll balance that out as we go along. So the next subject I'd like to speak on is aesthetics, really in particular gateway features and roadway entrance signs. We just recently completed the roadway signage master plan that identified the look and feel of the signs as well as possible locations. And I think it's now time, you know, we would be looking for some direction on locations. I have a couple of ideas, you know, if council is, obviously you can't give direction at this meeting, but, you know, where we're thinking would be a logical place to start to look, to do some of the signage that's outlined in your master plan as well as some other gateway features that we've talked about previously here at City Council. So I'm going to start with the beach accesses. Obviously, they were significantly impacted by Hurricane Ian. They are county, Lee County facilities. We have talked to them about the possibility of partnership, you know, in terms of, you know, putting their branding on our signage as well. And the opportunity here is to build back with our signage plan, you know? But also, we see that there might be a potential, and this is in its very early stages, but I tried to kind of point towards the idea here in this slide, of some type of visual cue to people that are driving along Hickory Boulevard as to whether that facility has parking spaces available or not. One of the things, I've experienced it, I'm sure the mayor has, you drive down that road and one of the things that happens when we're in full season and everything's up and functional is people are driving excessively slow, looking because it's hard to see whether there's vacancy at the parking areas or they're driving along and coming to a screeching halt because they see a parking stall or they see someone that's jumping into their car and, you know, it's the only spot that's there. So it seems logical that if we could incorporate into our new signage plan some ability to, you know, show lot full or vacancy, no vacancy, it's probably lot full. We think that would be a good opportunity. We've done some very initial looking into this and we found some technologies that don't require a paved surface, or at least it doesn't appear that they do, that they utilize a camera and a preset notion of where the parking stalls are. So as long as the camera is, you know, rigid and able to discern those parking stalls, it can then identify whether there's a vehicle there or not. And then, you know, if they're all full, kick out a, you know, lighted sign that says lot full within our new signage plan.
So you don't need ground sensors.
That's what we believe, yes. And that, that's a kind of a game changer because you don't have to pave all of these parking stalls and put, you know, inductive loops inside of them. You can just use a mounted camera system that has some computer processing behind it that can understand. If that proves to be the case, because this has been pretty initial, but we've found multiple systems that do that, we really think it's probably worthwhile incorporating that technology into our new signage plan and partnering with Lee County. I don't know what those partnerships would look like, but building those back along the beaches.
Do we utilize solar at all?
I'm not worried about solar for many reasons, but.
No, no, would we, well, you're worried about lighting it, right?
Generally speaking, it has applications. We use it from time to time for pedestrian crossings, but at this point, I'm not interested in being that granular.
And as a courtesy, we did reach out to Lee County management to express that we would be bringing that, this up at this, at this meeting and that in the future, we'd be looking to set up meetings with them and having a conversation because obviously this is their beach access and we want to do everything in partnership with them.
Okay. Another opportunity that has been kind of jumping off the pages for us ever since we built the road is, you know, we have the new roadway connection with Collier County at Logan Boulevard and that is a city right-of-way, a city corridor. It's fairly broad and so we think that this would be a very easy place for, you know, if council is interested in it, for one of our new gateway entrance signs. It's, we have the right-of-way, you come right off the curve out of Collier County. This is the county line. There's a really nice kind of green area here where we think we could easily situate one of our new signs and because it's within the city, on city property, you don't really have a whole lot of coordination other than to, you know, make that a practical reality. So switching gears a little bit, those are the two areas we think, what I've covered, where we think we can start to really implement the sign plan in the immediate. In addition, we've had a lot of discussion about the Imperial Parkway-Benita Beach Road intersection. In this, in this image, you know, you have Benita Beach Road, which is a Lee County facility. The southern portion of Imperial Parkway is also a Lee County facility. And in its current state, it's not shown, but there's a low, low-mounted billboard that's in the county right-of-way. It has a long-term lease, but, you know, the appetite has been from some of the council members, Councilman Purdon, has been to explore whether we can partner with the county to buy out the lease, you know, terminate the billboard use and then invest in some form of improvement. So we've had some concepts drawn up. I think council preferred the concept that I've shown here, which has these Sylvester palms. There's a hedge, some landscaping. You can see the billboard is gone. And then it also carries along this theme on the southern portion of the right-of-way here with these palm trees and low hedge to try and make that more of an entry feature. If you think about it, when you come off the interstate, that intersection really is the first place that you can start to, you know, make a statement about entry into the city other than right at the interstate exchange, so to speak.
Just for the record, on this one, I want to say the one that we had consensus on was actually the fountain and the flags.
I, did I use the wrong image?
It's okay. It's okay.
Probably did.
It did include a.
I thought I was alone.
Nope, 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 nope.
We're still so.
It's really far away. You can't see it.
It was the American flag.
Yeah, American flags in the water.
I apologize, we grabbed the wrong image, but to that end, we would, you know, probably think it's time to pursue that a little additionally. I know there's been some conversations, Arlene's talked to the folks at the county. I know Councilman Purdon has.
And we did also, at the, in the same conversation, express the county management, this would be presented tonight and we'd be looking for direction on prioritization so that we would continue that conversation.
And the good thing for us is, look, it's going to be at least a 50-50 deal because they own, they own one of the roads, we own one of the roads. Maybe they come back with more, but I think 50-50 is reasonable and they've all seemed to, the good thing for us is saying Delly lives right down the street from it. He hates it. He drives by it all the time. So I think we have an advocate there, too. So I think we can get it done and I think they're going to pay for at least half.
And when we go out for bids, the cost of concrete's coming down fairly dramatically. That'd be a big deal for us.
That's good to hear.
I do want to point out, I put with the concept, you know, it had an estimated cost of about $840,000. That doesn't include what it would take to extinguish the lease and I don't, I have no knowledge of what is remaining on the lease or the terms of the lease for the billboard, but, you know, that would be an additional expense, obviously, to this.
It's like $200,000, I think, but there's, it depends on how they cut it off in the contract, but that's what it initially looked like it was in the ballpark of.
Okay. And that concludes the transportation and aesthetics portion of the presentation.
I think at this point, of course, at workshops, there's no vote, but if there's a general consensus that we're moving in the right direction, we'll continue to plan and prioritize as these were presented to you. And then any formal actions, of course, are always brought back in a council meeting for a vote, so.
I support what you're doing.
Yeah, absolutely. Move forward.
Yes.
All right, with that, Parks and Recreation Director Nicole Corino will come forward so we can continue the CIP for community aesthetics.
I don't have the keyboard here.
Here, I got you.
All right, so, good afternoon, everyone. So next, we're switching gears a little bit. It actually rolls right into the, to what Matt was discussing in community aesthetics because those are where all the park projects are. So what I have for you is an update as well as direction on where you would like us to move forward, so. As you can see, there is a, we do have a pretty lengthy list of projects, which is great. Definitely love all the projects that we have and move forward to upgrade all of our facilities as well as expand for the youth of our community. So the first one we have is the master plan of the baseball complex. So we have gone through several phases of this plan and we did phase it out, as you know. So we did phase one and two and then we did a lighting phase and then now we're on to phase three. and then now we're on to phase three. So I'll go through those a little bit with you. So for phase one was really getting it ADA compliant as well as fixing the stormwater drainage. Those were the biggest components of this project. And aesthetic was a big portion of that, so you will see that there were aesthetics with that. But as I said, the big, the big portions were drainage as well as ADA compliance. We did have to do some rearranging a little bit of the baseball field. So we did have to move around some of the backstops just so we had room for those ADA compliant connections that we had. So you'll see here, the one on the left is the before. So this is the original, very small, skinny, narrow way through. And this is the after of phase one. So this was putting in pedestrian nodes as well as brick pavers, royal palms to make it very aesthetically pleasing as well. Next, here's another photo of, this is the issue that we had in between the two fields. It, the picture really doesn't do it justice. It was a very, I mean, it was a pretty vertical issue because the drainage was actually in the middle when they did it and not going out from the sides. So what we did was took out all of those old dugouts and made new pedestrian nodes and concrete. And now it's completely flat with the proper drainage. We, we utilized trench chains for this. So in doing that, we caused other issues to pop up, which meant that our field layouts themselves were no longer usable for Little League. So it made the fields kind of wonky-sized and didn't really help out. I mean, they could, they used it for a season, but it wasn't ideal. So we had to move on. And this also shows you, since we took out all of the dugouts and scorekeeper tables, we had to put those back in as well. Here's just some, and if you actually go there now, our dugouts look exactly like that. So that's a rendering and the dugouts look exactly like that. So we did go straight from the video. We do have a video, I didn't bring it to play today. But we do have a video and we mimicked exactly what, what the video showed. So for phase two, the goals, this was the biggest phase. So we completely redid fields one, two, and four because we had already completed field three with a grant that we utilized from the Minnesota Twins. So that was a huge deal for us. So what we did for that field was it received all-new fencing, it did receive additional drainage, scoreboards, upgraded pitcher's mounts. We did do some updates to that field, but the biggest part of that was already completed through that grant. But the other fields, we literally leveled everything out and started over. So new irrigation, new fencing, new dugouts, new scorer, as I said, scoreboards, foul balls, the whole gamut on that one. So here's some before and afters. As you can see on the left, the before, you really just see that pedestrian node, whereas if you look on the right-hand side, you actually can see the new vinyl-coated fencing, additional landscaping. We repainted the concession stand building and the dugouts are in there. I have some more photos. So as you can see on the after, that's an actual picture of what it looked like. So it does look exactly like the rendering that I showed. So that is the new version. Here's some additional photos, again, of the scorekeeper table and the new upgraded black vinyl fencing. And then here are the fields. So the field's got a complete overhaul and now they are all regulation-size Little League. Yes.
You said that regulation size, adult and Little League, two different. Do we have any of the four that are adult?
Yes.
How many?
One. So we have one that is, it's, it's actually called a senior league field, which is regular baseball-sized field. We do have adult leagues that play on that field. We have more adult leagues that tend to play on the softball field, but we do have some adult baseball leagues. And then we have the two Little League fields. So with these upgraded fields, with Hurricane Ian that did come through, as we all know, our fields were the only ones that were intact. And we did have districts this year at our facility because we were at that regulation size for all of our facilities. And we had lights that worked.
Congratulations, great job.
Thank you. Yes, we are very excited to, to host district tournaments this year. So the phase we just completed are the LED lighting phase. So all of our lights, we did have in-between fields, one and four, we did have one light that, that did crash to the ground during Hurricane Ian. It didn't affect playability for, we just had to reangle our old lights until we could get these new LED lighting system in. And this system is phenomenal for us. It's much easier controlled as well as energy efficient. The cost is much cheaper to utilize these light, these lights than it, than it was the previous system, which were the metal halide system. So, and this is all remote. We actually have, you know, on my app, I can turn them on and off, which is nice. So.
The power.
She wants to work from home, is what she's saying.
No, Jason has the ability to, as well as Little League, so. It, it actually helps us with rentals of not having to have a staff person go in and physically turn them on and off where we can utilize someone just having to push a button on their phone. So that was a huge bonus for us. And now we're on to phase, what we call phase three. So this phase is actually, you will have a, a proposal at the council meeting. So following this meeting, at the council meeting on the consent agenda, there is a proposal for us to start phase three. Phase three is putting in those shade structures, the, which we have none at the, at the current time, which we had to remove during phase one. But it puts those back in and they will mimic the, the finishings of the dugouts. They'll just be bigger. So they'll be two per field, same as the dugouts, so for a total of eight. As well as we will be putting in ADA-compliant bleachers, so not just the regular bleachers that you see, they will be ADA-compliant, as well as completely renovating the restroom facilities. Those restroom facilities are beyond their, their shelf life, as you could say. But, so we are completely gutting them and starting, starting scratch fresh. And so those will be completely redone. So we will have that if you vote to approve that proposal at the next, at the council meeting at 5:30. Then we will move forward on this project as soon as we can. And then we also have some future additions that were in the master plan. We do have funds and way out years for these because the things that we were doing in the first three phases in the lighting were the most important imperative things that we needed right away, where these are things that would definitely elevate and upgrade the facility, but they weren't something that we had to have to make the facility playable, usable, and do tournaments such as districts. So on this list, it is, Matt actually is doing a project on Pine Avenue. So this would actually connect the baseball complex facility to Pine Avenue. So it would extend you, extend those paver walkways all the way to Pine Avenue to the multi-use facilities that Matt is constructing through his projects. So it's kind of working those two together so there's more connectivity for people that walk and bike instead of kind of meandering through the park to get there. Also, we have enhanced landscaping on each field because currently we just have the enhanced landscaping in what we call the internal node. It's not all around the field, so we don't have any additional landscaping. There isn't any landscaping at all in the outfield and things like that. It's just in that internal node. So it would be adding that as well as the addition of two T-ball fields because we currently don't have T-ball. Most places don't actually, so this would actually enhance the use of our facility by adding two.
And Nicole, that was a request from...
Little League.
When we began the public workshops in the process, there was a public request for that.
Yes, they wanted to add T-ball because currently they're doing coach pitch, so it's, they can't do the, the little, the little teeny ones. Which would be nice because that, that's a group that, an age group that we don't have much for, the, the small ones, so. Also, a, a request from Little League was to have bullpens on each field as well as upgraded batting cages. We do have batting cages, but it would be to upgrade those and, as well as creating additional parking. The additional parking would actually be helpful, not only for Little League, but for our outdoor pavilion basketball facility because sometimes we have both going on at the same time and there's really not enough parking. So that would create additional parking for both facilities, not just the baseball complex. So I know I talked a lot about that one, but that's the most extensive project that we have been working on through all of the different phases.
Nicole, if you could clarify, you said additional landscaping. So first thought I got, come to mind in looking at the picture up there, at night, law enforcement, they're normally not going to get out and walk the entire area. Are they going to have a clear line of sight on the roadways around the parks that they can look in and see?
Yes, it, the, the enhanced landscaping is royal palms. It's, it's not shrubbery or anything like that, no, no. Any other questions on baseball? Moving on to the skate park and pump track, we are very excited. This project is now complete. We filed all of our paperwork for the grant. So Ellie, thank you very, very much for getting us the grant as well as keeping all the paperwork intact and getting us our funding back that we were awarded.
And appreciation to the Minnesota Twins for...
Oh, absolutely, yes, for their funding of the baseball complex, absolutely. So I will show you, we did hire Stan Tech. They have an action sports division. They're the ones that designed this with the help of the kids in our community. So we did hold public workshops and went through all of those. The kids actually got to design and draw in different things that they wanted in the skate park. And so they, they do, the ones that were involved are very excited, are there every day and love it. So we are very happy about that. And here was the, the design. This is the original design. This is what we designed it off of. And here are the pictures of what the features look like. So here is, on the left is the pump track. You use that for bikes and skateboards. For skateboarders, it's to do tricks. For bikes, it's also to do tricks, but it's a little easier than just all the ramps. Here's some other photos. In the background, you will see the wall in the back. That was an add-on that we had to do because once it was constructed, it was too low. So we did have to raise that wall up for safety. So that was completed as well. And here are some other views of the pump track and skate park as well. Oops. The problem we're running into now, so we have another little problem, which is also on the city council's agenda for next meeting. Now with the time change, it does get dark at 5:30. So they cannot utilize this park at night. So on your consent agenda on the next meeting is approval for adding LED lighting so that we can have night use of this facility. The middle school doesn't end until four, so four to 5:30 doesn't give them a lot of time. So if we did have LED lighting, one, they're much more energy efficient, but then they could utilize this facility more.
And it would be remote control?
Yes. Yes, it will be as well, yep. So now we're on to the Benita Springs Community Pool. So for this one, we do have shovel-ready plans as well as an approved LDO for construction of the children's activity pool. I know you've heard me discuss this before. And so what that will include is a zero-entry kiddie pool with an interactive play structure. So it's basically 18 inches of water with a playground in the middle. And it dumps water, buckets and sprays. And it's very similar to a splash pad in the zero-entry part because it will have spray features, but the rest will be a kiddie pool. Our current pool is a lap pool. It, there isn't a zero-entry. It's, you're going right into three feet of water. So it's not that conducive for small children. So this pool would be much better as well as making the parking lot ADA-compliant as well as adding a family restroom, which we currently do not have. So that was a big item that we needed to add to this facility to make it more suitable for families and children. This one, we do, I will go through the slides to show you the, the new additions. So here's a rendering of what it would look like. The current pool is on the left side as well as the current building. The, the children's activity pool is on the right side. And as you can see, it has its own pool, fencing, landscaping, shade structures, family restroom, as well as a, a new office. And it will have a new entry where you come in between the pools and there will be fencing where you, you'll go to the left to the children's pool with a gate. And then you'll go to the right to the, what we call the lap swim pool. And the gate will close. So that way, there will be a fence in between so the kiddos don't run back and forth and accidentally get in the wrong pool. So here's some renderings of what the play structure looks like. Like I said, it's a, basically a playground in the pool. So we'll go through some of these different pictures. That's an aerial. And this is a rend, a drawing of the family restroom, new pool entrance, and new pool office. But our current pool, let me back up here. Our current pool, the one on the left, that is our current pool, was built in 1989. So it is in need of some help. It, it works fine currently, but for future considerations, we do need to look at constructing a new pool. So we do need to look at construction of a new lap pool as well as renovations of the existing pool deck and the current building itself. Laura and her team are working on some of the priority one items for that building. But again, built in 1989, it does need some additional aesthetic items as well as making it more functional.
And I think at that time, we'd also like to look for some public input on that. I know from the high school, there's been some interest in allowing them to have a practice pool. Currently, they don't have a home team pool. So we, we'd want to understand what those needs were, how that, how that interrelated with the folks who utilize our pool now, how much space we have, but also getting some public input in that process as well.
Something I was going to bring up, and I know I did at a previous meeting, still like the idea of exploring the opportunity to do something out east that could be coordinated with the high school and with the community out there. Instead of trying to squeeze something into a limited space that we have now.
We actually just, and because you brought up space, we actually do have quite a bit of space that goes, we could expand towards the middle school. We do own that land as well. So we could expand that way if we, if we needed to because the kiddie pool is actually going closer to Pine Avenue. So we do have quite a bit of space on the other side as well, just...
So we'd like to explore that.
Sure, sure. And we do, the current high school does use our pool as their home pool, but it's only for practice only because right now, they don't, they can't do meets at our pool.
What hours do they use it?
They use it after school. So they use it between 2:30 and 4:00. So they come right after school and utilize our pool.
And meets are normally on?
Saturdays.
Saturdays.
Yep.
And typically, we have quite a bit of usage in the mornings at our pool.
Oh, yes, our, our pool is, is greatly utilized. I know I, I brought this up last year as well in terms of, due to Hurricane Ian, a lot of people did lose their pools. They lost, I mean, we're still seeing that large number of usage for our pool. That really hasn't slowed down for us. We were at capacity all summer long. We are still having some capacity issues with lap swimmers because once season hits, then we have all of our lap swimmers coming back. And we've had to utilize reservation systems and things like that just to try to fit in as many people as we can.
You know what would solve that, don't you?
Another pool.
Yes. I'm just saying.
Adjoining the YMCA.
So we're moving on. Anyone have any other questions about the pool? So now, the Lyles Hotel, I did want to give you an update. That project for the roof replacement was completed in May of twenty twenty-three, May of this year. So now, once this FEMA and our insurance company complete the interior project, which we are moving right along with that, we will be looking at doing stucco repairs, as you see on the photo on the right. We do have some stucco damage that was not caused by the hurricane, it's just years of, of the weather in Florida. So we would like to fix any of those stucco repairs and repaint, um, the entire building, as well as the wall along the Lyles Plaza. So if you see where the water tower is and the wall that goes across, that would be included in this project. So next, um, are Marnie Field's restroom facilities. So as you all know, you did vote for us to accept land from the Eagles Club in the photo at the bottom. That tiny little sliver at the top right-hand side, that's the portion that was, that we did accept from the Eagles. We are exploring a restroom facility being built in that area. So we are working with FPL to see if that is possible. But we still are working with Granby Minor to get, um, wire and sewer connections regardless, because even if we still utilize the restroom trailer, we need that water sewer connection. So that we still are moving forward on, um, but we are working with FPL to see if we can build a permanent restroom facility. Um, and we would bring that back to you once we have more information. Next is the Lightner Creek Soccer Complex. Again, I know Arlene has said that's a placeholder name. This is adjacent to the dog park, it's the same property. It's, uh, this is building an entirely new soccer complex, um, because both of our facilities are greatly used. We pretty much have run out of fields, so, um, this would be starting from scratch, building a whole new facility, with a new parking lot, a concession restroom building. This would be a more for children, because it would be smaller fields, so there would only be one adult field and three, uh, youth fields. And this does connect, um, from Benita Drive through to the Rosemary Community, uh, so that is, makes it walkable and connectable. And, as well as, this would have all new, uh, irrigation for the fields, lighting, all of those sort of aspects. This, uh, as you had previously given direction, was to do it all at once and not phase it, so that's what we're looking at. And hopefully, by your first meeting in December or second meeting, um, I will have a proposal at a council meeting for a design firm to get started on this project.
Additionally, this is one of the projects we submitted to the legislature as an appropriation for assistance, since we were moving, um, at, at the pace level we were moving.
So this one should be coming back to you for, for design approval of a, of a firm, um, to start this process. This also will greatly help the dog park, because the concession building will have restrooms, which can be utilized by both members that come for the dog park and people that come for soccer, as well as additional parking, because we don't ever have enough parking for the dog park either. And they use it typically at different times, so it is helpful, um, to have these things run in tandem. Next, so now we're moving on to, to something that was caused by Hurricane Ian. Landscaping is not an eligible FEMA reimbursable. So what we're looking at is re- uh, restoring the Hickory Circle, as well as Hickory, that North Hickory Boulevard roadway section, because all of that landscaping was destroyed from the hurricane. So as you can see on the photo on the left, that's how it originally was, and the photo on the right is what it looks like right now. So what we would be doing, uh, is designing a new plan for the right-of-way, the circle, as well as along the roadway, and then construction of, it needs new electric, new water meter, um, new irrigation system and complete landscaping, yes.
And the curbing has been chewed up.
Yes, and the curbing has had some issues, yes, from, the sand went over it to try to find where the roadway was. Some of the curbing was chewed up in that process.
Minor detail, but do we have electric in there?
There was electric running from the condos behind it to just light the flag.
That's my question.
But that was the only, um, electric that we had running to that.
So we could have a flag twenty-four hours a day?
Yes.
Correct, and I, I think that at some point in time, some of this was done in partnership with the Benita Beach Association. It is a city right-of-way, um, and so at this time, it's more appropriate for the city to properly provide the electricity, the irrigation, so that doesn't become a maintenance issue or concern, because it, it was sort of a, a partnership with borrowed electricity, borrowed water. We would like to do it as we do all our other streetscapes. Harden it, provide the appropriate infrastructure to it, and then it becomes easier for us to maintain when it's, when it's installed that way.
Next, we're on to, I know I've also discussed the Island Park entry. So this is the property that we purchased off of South Riverside Drive. It's the, the back entrance, or South Riverside Drive entrance into Island Park. So it's making it a pocket park. So we do have, uh, photo renderings of this, um, not to scale, um, but there are photo renderings. This has been designed, not fully designed, but we have, uh, retained whole Montez to do that, as well as it would be a place to provide a space for public art. And here are just some photos of some renderings of what, um, it could possibly look like. Next are the bandshell, uh, yeah.
Nicole on that one?
Yeah.
Do we have a price point on that one, on the pocket park?
We currently have funded, uh, five hundred and twenty-five thousand.
How much more do you anticipate we would need? The reason I'm asking this, because, um, you probably recall last year, the realtors came to us with an offer to do a pocket park via a grant that they have through NAR. And, um, we could start the conversation if I had an idea what the price point is.
We haven't put it out to bid. Um, that was a price point in the design process before the hurricane. It's mostly, I mean, it's a flat piece of land, it doesn't need to be cleared. But it, you know, with all, it is all brick pavers, the bridge is gonna be the priciest part. But we are looking at other, um, partnership opportunities as well.
Other folks who've approached that would, you know, need to be discussed with council first and wanted to have some funding opportunities too. But we would, I think the first step would be to get some preliminary design work done, and then we could get a better estimated price point.
And I, I mean, I'm all for people who want to help, but this shouldn't, this isn't like a marketing opportunity, like we're seeing at the high school right now. I don't want it to be a situation where like, this pocket park is brought to you by John R. Wood. We're not doing that. Nothing against John R. Wood, I love John R. Wood, so if you're listening, I did not-
I'm listening.
You get what I'm saying, you get what I'm saying. But, but it should be a situ- it should be a situation, um, you know, where if people want to give us money to do it, we need to take them up on it.
I don't want to be a fly in the ointment, and as much as I love pocket parks, and you know how you think about sculptures and art, but that is definitely not an, uh, accurate rendering of the space itself, and that's what I want you all to understand. It's much smaller than it is.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
So when you look at it, this would be great. That's not what it's gonna be. And when you talk about a half a million dollars, or even four hundred thousand dollars, just don't think it's probably about sixty percent that size.
The, the biggest cost, as I said, is the bridge. Currently, we don't have vehicular access to Island Park. So it is difficult for us to maintain those facilities. We basically have to take everything over by side-by-sides. So when we replenish all of the shell or cut trees, you cannot get a vehicle over there. And it is all shell pass and trees. So this would make, uh, the bridge would make it vehicular accessible for staff and for maintaining, um, Island Park. So it'd also help us get over there. So that's gonna be a big part of the cost, is making that bridge, which now is just a small walkway into a veh- vehicular access bridge. So again, that is the big portion of the cost.
When you guys are out on the side-by-sides, if you ever want to take a councilman to work day.
Uh, next, we're on to Riverside Park Bandshell. Um, I've discussed this with you before, um, in terms of the turf and the difficulty that we have in maintaining that, because of how many events we do have. So we have looked into options to make it artificial. And, um, there are some, I, I wouldn't say concerns, but there are different things that we, we have to lay it out a specific way, because you can't put tents and things like that into artificial turf. So you would have to lay it out, so it does take, uh, a more design than just putting turf down. So there would be designs as, uh, for example, putting in hooks when you're building it, so that way, the, the tent areas for events are in a specific location.
There's the submerged hooks too, right? They've got little caps on them, so they're not a hazard.
They are not a hazard. They do have caps on them, and you just pull them, uh, pull them up when you want to use them. But we would have to lay it out a specific way, that would be most conducive for all of our events that we have in the park, as where, as we would have to have, you know, very strict rules of no driving vehicles onto it and things like that, because that could damage the turf. So we do have a couple of things like that, but it would make it pretty and green all year round. So, and not have to have the issues of thousands of people using it and, and the turf dying. Also, uh, what we are, yes.
As far as the-
Oh, excuse me, sorry.
I'm not saying, I'm not against the turf, I'm just, from a, from a logistical standpoint, you know, when kids drop, you know, their ice cream face-first into the, into this turf, a- and people are spilling things, their cigarettes and all this crap, what do we do at the end of the day? How do we keep, what is the maintenance and upkeep of that look like? Because it isn't like the grass, where kind of some of the stuff is gonna seep in, it's like, this is gonna be, it's like spilling something on the carpet, so what do you do with that?
There are specific pieces of equipment that clean, uh, turf. Um, we actually went to Paradise Coast and we- Yes, when we were there-
Yeah, but their machine was broken, they said it sucked, that's why I was like-
That particular one, we, we don't, we don't want that one.
Breaking and sanding, re-sanding, uh, that they, that they use, there's some different machines that, that, um, that help sanitize, and there's wet downs as well.
Yep, yep, so there, there is, uh, there are different types of equipment, because they do have event, I mean, theirs is for soccer, but they do put concerts on and have events in that, in that space as well. Right now, they bring in a large, um, like a mobile stage sort of thing that can be rolled on. Whereas, we wouldn't necessarily be looking at that, because we have a stage, so we would be looking at more of the tents and things like that, and just having to purchase the equipment to, to upkeep it. Basically, it's, it's similar to, you know, having to have it mowed all the time, or irrigated and all of those things. You're, you're taking that away, but yes, you are adding a, a different type of maintenance. And also, we're looking to repaint the bandshell, and then for future, uh, plans, we would like to upgrade all of the restroom facilities at the bandshell as well. Next is the current soccer complex concession and restroom building. That building is, uh, original from two thousand and four, three, maybe, two thousand and four. Uh, so that one also is in need of renovations, twenty years old. So we are looking at doing what we did, or what we would like to do, uh, in Phase Three for the baseball, completely redoing those restrooms, redoing, uh, the concession stand itself, replacing the roll downs, all of those sort of things to this building as well. So what we did with baseball, doing it with soccer. Just not to that extent, because these are newer fields, and they're already regulation and nice and and possible future consideration, uh, down the line, would be switching out these lights to LED lighting as well, because that would save a lot on cost for us in terms of monthly billing.
Do we have it set up like now, so if like one goes out, pretty much we're replacing with LED, or do we do?
That's not how these fixtures work. Um, it's a giant, and they're on two arms, so you really can't retrofit one light. You would have to retrofit an entire, um, and the poles, the electrics, you have to switch out the whole electric within the pole. And it would, they're brighter.
Price point wise, it wouldn't be advantageous to us to do one at a time. We would get better cost pricing if we did as a project and replaced out a series of lights. You'd, you'd make out better economically.
There was a news story last night on, uh, I think it was Wink, but they were talking about they replaced, twelve lights at one of the ballparks up in Cape Coral, nine hundred thousand dollars. Nine hundred thousand, so I don't know what they're using, but-
Did they save? That it cost or that it saved?
No, it didn't save, they were replacing lights that were destroyed by Hurricane Ian. They're just doing it now, but nine hundred thousand plus. So I know we're not doing that, so I'm just trying to figure out what they're doing. We're doing something better, so kudos to your teams to know what the ballpark lights cost.
Right, the, the, the ballpark lights were, uh, one point one million dollars.
For how many?
Um, we switched out probably about the same amount.
But they're talking about just the light fixtures, they weren't talking about-
Oh, no, ours was whole poles.
Right, yeah.
We replaced the entire, the pole and fixture. And we would be looking to do the same here. It would be the entire pole and fixture. Next is the tennis courts at Community Park. The photo on the top, um, shows their original condition. They are, um, again, over twenty-some years old, so we do need to resurface them. We do have some cracks, um, nothing major, but we do need to bring them back to their, um, original pristine condition, as well as, due to the baseball complex, uh, which you actually see the lights in the back, those are the new LED lights. It's, we have upgraded this park, so now we have two facilities, the tennis court, as well as the playground, which I'll show you next, with the old chain-link galvanized steel fencing. So it does look rundown compared to the rest. So we are looking to upgrade that fencing, so that it reflects that upgraded fencing of the rest of the park and everything else that we're doing in, within that park, along with that resurfacing. So it's giving it, um, a facelift, as we say, community aesthetics, so it would be a facelift of that, that hole. Court. Uh, next, the playground, again, um, you can see the black, uh, vinyl coated fencing in the back from the baseball fields, and then in the front, you see the older fencing of the playground. Also with the playground, um, since we did shift the fields, the playground is no longer entirely fenced in. So we have had complaints from parents asking us to completely encase it in fencing again. So that way, i- the, the kids will stay within the, the playground itself, because it is a roadway right in front of that. It is a drive of Community Park, but it still is a roadway. So redoing that fence at the same time as doing the resealing of this. This just, the rubber needs resealed every five years, so it does need a reseal. We are at that time, um, timeframe. And we have discussed previously Depot Park, uh, playground renovations of expanding this, uh, to include more features for all age groups, instead of currently, it's mostly for, for small children. So the opposite, I guess, of the pool. So we would be expanding it, as well as expanding amenities all the way down to the river, and not just stopping at that front, that front portion, so that way, it would be a larger part for people to utilize. And that concludes-
The bathrooms at Depot, the bathrooms?
We do have bathrooms at Depot currently, but, um, and we have renovated those in twenty thirteen, but when we do the renovations, we would look at upgrading those and possibly adding additional.
Nicole, do you ever see a day where we might be considering pickleball courts?
Well, we did partner with the YMCA to build, um, their eight pickleball courts. So we did, we did pay a pretty large portion of that, because they had the land and we didn't. So you do need quite a bit of space, so, um, you know, that's something that we, we could look at as we look at finding land. I'm not sure that Depot would be the most suitable, due to it is a loud sport. So we do have nothing like it community, as well as, we don't want it affecting, um, the events at the bandshell, because you- at the Banchel, because it can be loud. But yes, I mean, if we, if we find land, that's always a possibility. We do have three courts lined in the rec center now that are indoor, which are greatly utilized, because some people just like to play indoor versus outdoor, especially today. It was, we had lines and waiting, because it was raining all day. So we were very busy with pickleball today. But yes, I mean, it is something that's expanding, that can be looked at and utilized, but again, we need the land.
I did bring it up to Angel over at the YMCA a couple months ago, and he had stated that there was potentially interest in a pickleball expansion on their side, and it would look similar to how we did it here. But we had, about seven years ago, we had a study that was done, and so it's, I mean, it's not gonna be accurate now, but we actually had, like, if we did a Phase Two, here's what it would look like a long time ago. We would have to redo that, but, long story short, that was before him, but he knew of it, and when I brought it up to him, he was aware of it, and it was something that he'd said that, you know, they'd potentially be open to. If that, if, I mean, if it being in the same spot isn't an issue, I mean, if the idea is to get it somewhere completely, then that's irrelevant, but...
I'm just, you know, what we're finding in Benita Bay, for example, is that we've got both tennis and pickleball. And given the demographics in terms of age and so forth, there's more migration towards pickleball and less utilization of tennis, because pickleball is just an easier thing for, and you think about, you know, a lot of the, what the ages are in Benita Springs, and we think that we're gonna, there's gonna be a need for more pickleball courts that the public can use at some point.
That's something that, that we can look into as, as land becomes available. Our current tennis courts, we do have the only two public tennis courts in the city, which are greatly utilized. We do have leagues on Monday, Wednesday, Friday mornings. The middle school, there are, they are their home tennis courts. So they utilize them for practice and for matches. So those, those, because we have had people ask us before about converting them, but they're so utilized that we cannot do that. But we do have the three courts inside the rec center now, and then the eight at the YMCA. But, I mean, we're always looking for additional land.
Me too, is, we might want to ask you to kind of consider tennis and pickleball the same time, that you do have quite a, quite a bit for the youth, for the tennis, because I do know that Benita Charter also utilizes...
Yep, they do.
Those only public courts that we have to practice, Benita Middle. And so I know, I know there's an interest, you know, from the community on the tennis courts, and I know that they're highly, there's usually people waiting for them.
There are people waiting for the tennis courts, yes.
I just, yeah, I just think racket sports in general, we need, we gotta make sure we got enough, whether it's pickleball or tennis.
Yep, definitely something to look into. Any other questions?
On the dog park, that's all, it's gonna be soccer fields?
It's not gonna, the dog park will remain, and I can go back there. It's the property adjacent, so currently, we have only, what you see in yellow, that's the dog park. It would be the portion of the property to the west, as well as to the north, that we would be utilizing for soccer. So it would have a dual function.
Okay, there's not pickleball courts, there's soccer courts?
Soccer fields, yep. Yeah, pickleball would probably be a little tough here as well, for the dogs, that I don't think that would kind of mix very well.
Okay, very good.
Yep. All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So if there's a general consensus that we're moving in the right direction, we'll continue to move forward and...
I think Nicole and staff have done a great job.
Thank you.
Please move forward. Council discussion, are we having that right now, or...
Yep, that, well, that concludes our presentation right now. But yes, council discussion, and then there's an opportunity for public comment.
More conversation on the presentations? About public comment? Public comment? I see none. I guess we're joined, we'll be back here at 5:30. Thank you.